Well, it's time to call a meeting to order, so we'll do that, and we do have a horn, I believe. August twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-four minutes. Doesn't seem like it's that long ago, does it?
I wasn't here, but I just noticed that Terry Hagel is both present and absent.
Oh, he was, huh?
I'm here.
Terry, were you present or absent in August?
He came in later, though.
Don't hit the guy that's incapacitated. Have to put that in the minutes.
No, they had me absent and not here. Any questions or clarification before we dispose of the those minutes? Hearing no questions, any chair will declare them if they are accepted. He's got such a big personality, he could be more than one place at once anyway. Any public comments for items that are not on the agenda tight? Another opportunity before we adjourn. On to case Z twenty-two-five zero-one. Owning change for area and Parkside Edition along Ash Street. You have had an opportunity to see the application. I don't know anything else you want to say about that. Seems like we've dealt with that before. No, not that one. The other, the other one tonight.
Right, yes, we haven't dealt with that one before, yeah. So, Daryl Driggers is, is the owner of the LLC that's applying for this. And he did mention to me today that he may end up changing the ownership to a different LLC at some point. That's irrelevant for our decision making here. So it is C two general commercial originally, it doesn't actually have an address assigned to it yet, because it was all part of the Parkside Edition. So these are the, I guess they're duplexes, right? They're duplexes?
Three fourplexes.
Three fourplexes. Better against Ash Street and then basically in the corner of Willow and Ash. They're dilapidated to the point where they're uninhabitable and have been an issue for a while. Parkside sought permission to sell those lots. They have all their property connected into a financing structure that requires the city to, to release those lots. And so we've released them from that so that they could go ahead and sell these. Daryl's plan is to knock these down, demolish these and construct some new, either duplexes or townhomes. He's not a hundred percent sure yet, but in order to even do that, he needs to really have it rezoned for residential use. Right now, once you take those out, they fall under the underlying zoning, which is C two, general commercial zoning. And that doesn't allow for multifamily homes. So the request then is for R three zoning, which is multifamily, would allow them to build a duplex or a triplex or whatever they wanted there. There's obviously some limitations on those lots as far as what you could do. You know, you theoretically can build an apartment complex with the R three zoning, but that's practically impossible from that particular, those lots. So that, that is the request. We don't, I don't think there's any issue. In fact, I'm actually quite pleased to see that they're getting knocked down and that view windows will be constructed. I drive by them every day.
We all be pleased.
And this is, what he's doing is apart, separate from Parkside.
Yeah, it's completely separated out. He's, he's weren't, and he's not affiliated in any way with Parkside. These would be commercial, just for him, yeah.
So would the driveway be along the?
I think he's talking about putting him on Ash Street, maybe coming off.
That's a private drive.
That's in the back, so that would be something we would have to negotiate with him as far as curb cuts and how that gets placed. And he's not quite there yet, but.
For multifamily, how many parking spaces are they required for each unit?
On off-site per unit.
Okay, so he puts in a. So it'd be if a lot, it'd be four driveways.
Well, you can have a shared driveway.
Yeah, two driveways, but four parking spots. Other questions?
So the question is to approve the.
A zoning change.
I'll move that if we're ready, when we're ready.
Okay, I'll second. One more opportunity for before we call for the question. Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose no? Motion has carried, thank you. Okay, on to public hearing on case number Z twenty-two-five zero-two. Five oh one South Main. Candace is gonna wow us with her oratory here.
Basically, we're just requesting, when we bought the building, we didn't realize that it had been rezoned for apartments. So we are requesting that it be zoned back to the office space. Mostly used for private office for our family, but also would like to be able to offer that to the Hillsborough Community Foundation for them to have a space for their office as well. And that would be the only one that we would be renting to at this point, but that's what we're planning to do with that. We would like to have it rezoned for that.
That's just returning to what it was essentially.
Well, actually, it's a little different. The previous zoning, when we rezoned it last year, was actually CS, which is highway district. Because it used to be on the highway. So what this is, is request to go to C two, which is general commercial. There's not a huge difference, but this one allows for office space and is probably more consistent with what it should be.
City doesn't have an issue with that, do they, as far as your?
I don't have an issue with that. I mean, it's. It's, it's an office space. It's gonna have be pretty low traffic. You know, I don't think that it, that's what it was before previously. There's never been an issue with it, so I wouldn't assume that there'd be any problems.
I'll ask the parking question again. What's the parking requirement? Is it by square foot or?
For office space, that's a great question. I think it is per square foot. It's a formula based on square foot. You could probably pull it up, man.
I'm just trying to grab it real quick.
There's parking right in front of it too, right on the street there's. Right off Main Street, yeah. In the back, I guess.
There's space in the back.
Does that enter off?
The alley.
The alley, okay.
And visualize it, go by there.
The front, I think so.
Two or three. The parking off the alley, it's not paved, correct?
Correct. In fact, I think it's just dirt, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know that it is considered parking. But it, but it could be.
Could be.
Easily, you know, if you put a surface down.
Yeah, yeah.
Office building is one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square foot. I don't know how big that is, but.
Because it changes like hospitals or how many beds and doctors and, you know.
No, there's a very detailed table about all of them, so.
This just shows the size of the lot, not the building.
I have to measure out the building real quick.
That sounds a little small for one person.
Two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, yeah.
That's quite a bit of parking, really, for two-hundred-and-fifty square feet's not a whole lot, really.
There's, along the main street there, there is, of course, there's a house right next to that.
There is a house right next to it, yeah.
There's some, I suppose, parking along the street that's available if we're needed to as well, street parking for. Doesn't count.
Not toward the, it's off-street parking. I, I think there's plenty of room. We use in the back, it's just, they may have an additional cost and have them to put in additional parking, and you should know that upfront.
Well, it'd be required as far as surface. Is gravel sufficient or does it have to be?
It depends on the gravel.
Dust-free service.
Dust-free service, whatever.
So not limestone.
Sounds like you know that one.
Had that conversation.
Okay, other questions? I assume you haven't heard from any of the neighbors?
Heard nothing from anybody. We sent out the letters like we normally do and.
I'm, I'm, we recommend approval of the rezon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
One more chance for questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose no? Motion has carried, thank you. You can go talk to the council then next. Do you, do you know when that would be?
It will be the second meeting in February, which should be eighteenth, second Tuesday.
Our action is a recommendation to the council.
Be the eighteen, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, AMPI property.
Yes, sir. So we've been actually kind of looking at this for a little while. We have, well, since I've been here, we've not gone through the plating process, so this is kind of a new thing, probably for some of you. So what, what plating is, is basically just re-dividing a piece of property. This is the, it's actually pretty close to a final plat, but we don't really have a, a one-step process in our code. So what it does is takes the AMPI property, which right now is this outline here. It's all one piece. And when we sectioned out, you can you can take one lot out of it and, and pull it out, and then, then if you want to do another lot, you have to go back and replat it effectively. And so when we took the lot out to do the EMS station, we, we used our one, we used our one. So it's, it got pulled out. And now that we're looking at doing other things, we're looking at the fire station, we're looking at some other issues. There's some taxing issues we gotta deal with too. So what this would do is go and divide up that property and replat it so that we would have different lots. And we take care of our tax issue. And then also, you know, if, if at some point in the future, we're wanting to demolish all or a portion of that building, you can do it kind of a lot, but what it does is it takes and makes common walls within the building. So we tried to split it up into the parts that we actually use versus what is effective, well, it's been condemned. So you've got these lots in the center here, these are all common wall lots, which is how EBH has done this. So this is the police department here. It sits on its own. It would be its own lot. This is this entire back section and middle section becomes its own lot, the front here, welding schools in here. There's a little bit of other stuff in there. And then this section right here is in the back, which we use for storage right now. And the fire department currently has the, the bays in there, so. Yeah, a little apparatus bay. So those will be split into individual lots. We took in this entire section, so this west bill, or east building, excuse me, kind of lives on its own, it has, anyway. So that and the property attached to it would all come into its own lot. The area all around it becomes a reserve, so it becomes an access for the property. Not necessarily public access, it's just a reserve so that you can access all the lots within it and around it. There's driving space on most of this, except for this north piece where there's no, there is no driving space, really. It's just an open field that goes out this way, the, the tower, or the, the smoke stacks right here.
Four-wheel drive.
You got four-wheel drive, you can make it, but. Walk your dog through there. Uh, this is the lot that exists right now for the EMS, that county owns this portion. This would be the section that we would take out for the new fire station that we're, we're talking about building. And again, this is all the rest is, is reserved, so you can access all those pieces. It's pretty straightforward. All the utilities are pretty much, they remain. We're just cutting up the building effectively. There wouldn't be any utility changes. There's nothing as far as the comp plan that you have to consider. Anytime you do a plat, you have to consider the comp plan and how that interacts with it. There's no arterial roads or anything like that, so the setbacks in the buildings are fine. It really is just kind of cutting it up. It's a pretty straightforward one, honestly, but there's not as much you have to deal with on the plat, plating process than you would normally, if it was like a brand-new subdivision, so. I don't know, you have anything to add to that, Ben?
Not really. I mean, really, I think the key issue is that all the lots are accessible. You know, they, they, they're not accessible by a roadway, but they're accessible by the reserves, so you've accounted for that.
Refresh my memory, why'd this come up again?
So one of the issues, we, we wanna look at how we, how we address this building in the future. And so one issue is we have some taxing problems because the county views this as one parcel. And some of the, the uses within that parcel are commercials, so like spa guy, Chuck, he's got a building, he's part of it. So they tax us on the whole thing when they really shouldn't. And they have been unwilling, I think would be the way to say that, unwilling to make any concessions for that. And so this allows us to split that off and say, all right, well, if you're in charge of taxes, it's just gonna be your own lot too, because the rest of it's public use. And then reserved, so you shouldn't be charging his property taxes for that, which should cut it down significantly. Yes, sir.
Main Street doesn't have the right-of-way going on north past.
It ends on Third. That ends at Third Street.
There's a house on.
Yeah, right, the.
And they use that as a street to get to their house, and the driveway is on that side.
Right, yeah, so that's, they would have access to this reserve here too, so that they can come up on here. This is all reserved.
So their access would not change with any of this, okay.
They're really the only lot that's affected. Rest of these, I mean, these to the north, the city actually owns these two. We sold two to Chuck Maltby, who owns the spa company. His intention at some point is to build a zone. Maybe not workshop, but what do you call it, like a sales, like a storefront, that's what he wants to do. If you've ever talked with Chuck, he's got a lot of ideas.
He's happy to share.
He is happy to share. So this is just a sketch plan. We're, we're treating this as a sketch plan. The next piece of the process would go to the preliminary plating, which would require us to send out information to anyone within two-hundred feet. So you'd actually have another crack at this as a formal preliminary plat process. Then if you, you know, if we're to find this to be acceptable, we would sign off on that, and then when we enter the final plating process, you can actually, at any point, make changes to this or suggestions for changes if you find that it doesn't meet the requirements. We'll put together a staff report that says, here's, here's what we found with this. And then you'll have another opportunity to look at it, and then it would go from preliminary, and there's another waiting period, and then it would go into potentially final plating. You have to do the fi, once the preliminary is approved, you have twelve months to approve the final plat by our code. Probably wouldn't wait that long, probably just bring it right back to you once all the timed, timed things have elapsed within here, so. This one's pretty straightforward. It's actually a really easy one, as far as plating goes. It really is pretty just internal and not, nothing, nothing fancy, nothing weird. I would also go to all the utility companies. That's one of the other things you have to do, send it off to utility companies, so they can have a chance to review that, to see if it impacts any of their utilities. I think the only thing that potentially would be there would be a gas line, and it runs in the front piece of this. Everything else, I believe, is accessible.
That's kind of this little easement right here. Is that what you're talking about, Matt?
Yeah, there's a gas line easement right there.
It's probably, it's gonna get moved, more likely.
Build that fire station, so. That's the other reason.
There's no really good reason not to do this, I don't think, is there?
Not really. It saves the city money with land bank money. It's something, honestly, we should have done a long time ago, but it's just kind of been, it wasn't super high on priority. Here we are now, though. I don't like paying taxes to the county if I don't have to.
Let me understand this, saving money is not high on the priority?
No, replating this one, I argue with the county every year about this to try to save money, but this is the solution that was given.
That in the minutes?
It won't fit in my sports column, but I can work on it.
It's hard to identify a downside, really.
Yeah, with this one, not really. So any questions on the sketch plat or the process?
So is there a long-range plan with AMPI or?
Ideally, I'd like to knock it down, because most of it's condemned, honestly. If you go into the base, Ben won't let you go in there. Asbestos, various others. It's a nightmare.
Unsafe. It is unsafe.
You really shouldn't be in there. Long range, I think we'd like to find a new home for the police department. And then this would go away and potentially become a fire training ground. It's one of the things we've kicked around. There's some grant funding that may be able to help with some of that, so to be determined, but we'd like to see it go away. One of those gifts that keeps on giving.
Okay, thank you. There aren't any other questions. We'll move on to Prairie Commerce Park.
This one's a little bit different. So this is the area, this is the hospital right here. Yeah, this is the hospital. You'll see, this is industrial, it's the highway. And so the city has owned all this section around here. It was purchased with the idea, I think, of just putting a hospital on it. And so what we've talked about doing is turning it into a commerce park. And so I had EBH do a sketch plat for this too, so that we can begin that process. This one has more utility, obviously, through it. You can see where the water, potential water lines would go. There's, you do street extensions in here. It creates these lots, and, and then there's drainage reserves on the south side of this. So you got a lot here, and what do we, can't see it real well. I don't know how many there are total in here. Nine, yeah. Thought process with this one was that we would, the streets are aligned with, if you were to draw these streets continuously to the west, they would line up with our existing streets, and that's kind of how Darren put those in there. He looped the water on the, like, it'd be the east side of the street, because this is, this is tilted sideways, so it's easier to kind of get on a sheet of paper, but. And then we'd have kind of this section up here. The thought with this was that we could turn that potentially into a multifamily. At one point, we had somebody interested in doing some apartments, and that may be a good, good use for that space. It's right next to the hospital, pretty light.
Just west of the hospital, right?
Yeah, it'd be just west of the hospital, so you'd have to come in and, and build this road. And then the rest would be commercial. You could potentially, it's, it's next door to some industrial property. I don't know that you want to zon it anything heavier than light industrial. Just because of its proximity to the hospital, you don't want like a tire factory, you know, you don't want some of that stuff there. Especially if you're talking about doing some kind of housing piece, it should be, you know, consistent with that, so.
What typically would be in a commerce park as opposed to an industrial park?
Yeah, it would be more just commercial businesses. You may find some light manufacturing stuff. Data centers can potentially be in that. Yeah, there's, there's just kind of a host of light manufacturing, commercial stuff, strip malls, that kind of thing.
Does the south end, the walking path?
Yeah, the walking path, you can see it on here.
That's what that is.
Overly here, yeah, this is the walking trail. And it goes all the way to the hospital here.
The cursor kind of disappeared.
Yeah, I don't know why that is. It's, it's down here somewhere, you know, and it's not oriented north-south. That's probably what, it's a little bit confusing, I can, I can use that.
Not sure I can see correctly from here, but it almost looks like Joe's dog has deposited something.
Well, we pick up, that's the thing. Bring our baggy on. Thank you. Didn't use to, but we do.
Yeah, that's a responsible.
Yeah, there is. We learned.
The light manufacturing, that'd be something we built.
That would be kind of the idea, and these lots, I mean, I had Darren draw them to be roughly the same size. You could always come back in and, you know, if you needed something to make something bigger, you could do that. There are some gas pipelines that run through here that we'd have to address, so he put the lot lines on top of those, so that you could put an easement there to access those. Not, you're not, definitely not gonna want to build on top of that. There's a couple bigger, I mean, there's one bigger lot there. I think his, his, his thinking on this was that you could develop these, in these lots closer to industrial first. You wouldn't necessarily want to come directly off industrial. The idea is that you'd have that street access. And it would be kind of self-contained then, and the backs of these lots would come up to industrial. He's, this, yeah, this would be the, well, yeah.
How far west does it go?
Goes up to the tree line.
So it connects to the town.
No, not quite, because there's, this, this section right here is owned by somebody else. But then it comes into.
It's the dark. So the only place the new roads, they only cross the walking path in two places instead of every lot.
Right, yeah, that was another consideration too. We don't want a bunch of driveways coming along with that.
And then you, you say the city owns all this, so they would be marketing them.
Yeah. Every so often, we get somebody comes in, he's interested in something that maybe doesn't make sense in the industrial park, and there's really not. There's only one like partial lot that you could build on there now, since this and that farm has bought the last one on the corner. So, you know, we get things that come through, and we don't really have a spot for them right now that makes sense. It's not always commercial. They maybe need something bigger, you know, it doesn't really work out and out in Hillsborough Heights, so we kind of looked at this and said, okay, well, this is another area we could open up and see if we could get something there. I don't know that we'd build the street until we had something interested. I mean, we wouldn't put the money out unless we had, because I don't think the city wants to pay specials on those streets and the infrastructure. But it gives us some, some more opportunity to develop some of that.
Folks at the hospital know anything about this, sir?
Yeah, well, I talked to Mark about it. Of course, he's, his last day is tomorrow, so talked to the new guy too. They were in favor of it. I mean, they don't have any problem with developing yet. They'd like to see more things there. They're particularly interested in the housing, if that was something that could happen, because we got a lot of people there who could use housing, so work there.
Okay, other questions? And let's move on to city administrators' report.
Don't really have a whole lot to talk about today. The Orchard Ridge project is moving forward. That's the Menonite Housing Project. We've got some plans we're sort of looking at right now, at least it's more of a sketch than a plan. There's some zoning things that we definitely are gonna have to look at with this group. And I've got a meeting with them tomorrow to talk about some of that stuff. So they may end up getting some of that, may have to do replat on one of those sections, so. Which would slow them down a little bit, but the plan was for them, we're, we're going through what's called our redevelopment housing incentive district process right now. To help pay for some of the infrastructure in there, the public infrastructure, anyway. And that, that's a process too, so there's some elements to that, but they're hoping to get everything kind of wrapped up and construction started sometime this summer, so. And then by the time they get going, they felt like by the end of the year, they would have some of their units open. And they kind of work, work down and open them as they finish them, so there wouldn't be like a waiting period to get them all done. So.
What's eligibility for that?
It's income-based. Low to moderate income. It's called workforce housing, so it's got pretty, it's actually got some pretty high limits as far as what you can make, depending on how many people are in your household. So that's moving forward. We're in the middle of our strategic planning process right now. that's moving forward. We're in the middle of our strategic planning process right now, uh, and so we're rewriting some of those things. And I know there's gonna be some work for the planning commission. Uh, I got told in the budget process last year that we needed to hire somebody to help us finish the comp plan. I know we've talked about it sort of at the edges and I just don't have the time to do it. And I know Ben doesn't. So we're probably gonna have to hire somebody to help us finish that. It's just too much of a pain in the backside to, to, to do it in-house, honestly, so. Yeah, and then we've got another, we're participating in an EPA grant through Flint Hills Regional Council uh, to do some downtown and Main Street development planning. Uh, that'll actually start this summer, so there'll be a role for the planning commission in that as well. Um, and downtown businesses, so should be, should be good. There's a lot of planning stuff happening this year, so. Uh, I hope you didn't get too used to not meeting, uh, maybe some more, more of that that needs to happen, so. I don't, if you have any questions about anything, it's been a long time since we've met, so.
How's the container homes?
Yeah, whatever they're nothing yet.
They applied for a grant, I know that. Late last year. I haven't heard anything about it, but you, didn't you say, Joe, that they were on the market or maybe?
I, I saw where there was lots were listed for sale. Yeah.
So maybe they're back up for sale. Don't know.
Know what happened at one place south of town there. That's, that's the ours, but yeah, that, that we're gonna build on.
That's in the county, actually.
Yeah, but that, that's.
Yeah. This is what it is. And yeah, I mean, they were gonna build a manufacturing.
Something like that fit into this space.
In the commerce part? Wouldn't think so. It'd be home manufacturing. I don't think that probably fit. I'd have to check this morning. Yeah.
Well, I saw the lot, the one they had for sale in Linsburg, they turned into Airbnb. It was on the market for a while.
And they're having some struggles with labor and, and their model, so. To be determined. That's all I know about it, Eddie. They're not there.
Okay, anything else? Where are we at with the election of officers? Where, where should we be?
You absolutely can do an election of officers, I'm.
Well, I've been show up on the agenda one of these times.
Yeah. That is true.
Can't you just make an executive order and say you're still chairman?
No.
No, you really have to do it. I have to check with Danielle on what that looks like. She's unfortunately not here today, so. I know that you want to be out of the chairmanship and then Joe really wants to do it, so that would be something we could.
Nobody wants that.
It shouldn't be a lifetime appointment.
That's true.
Or a lifetime sentence, depending on how you're looking at it.
Well, I gotta hand it to city staff. You make it fairly straightforward.
It's not painless, but it's.
Okay, anything else? If not, we're adjourned at six oh four.